I'd like to call this September 11th Council Work Session, regular meeting to order. Would everybody please rise in front of the silence? Let's remember all the ladies who passed away during the march.
Also, today being September 11th, let's remember the families and the victims of the tragedies that happened 22 years ago that changed the world forever. Let's remember those that perished, the families that suffered, and most importantly, let's think about, you know, what I think is the best thing that came out of September 11th, because there's nothing good about it, but it was September 12th, when it didn't matter what race, what religion, what you were, everyone came together and we were Americans. And let's hope that we get back there one day.
Please, one more.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, Mr. Trump, Rodriguez, Mr. Gorman.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Katoche.
President.
Mr. De Giuseppe.
Here.
Right now, we're at the public participation. If anybody on this side would like to speak on anything, they'd have to throw your name in.
Good evening, Bill Pezza. I want to echo what Mayor De Giuseppe just said, and I want to put one more thing in perspective. I teach college freshmen and sophomores, and it's important that we remember that none of them were alive for September 11th. So when you talk about September 11th, you could be talking about the Vietnam War or the Civil War. It's distant history, and it's important that we teach it and that we spend time as families making sure that our young ones, not too young, but that our young ones know what happened. And I also want to encourage people, if you haven't ever done it, to visit the Garden of Reflection in Lower Makefield. It is absolutely beautiful, and every part of its architectural features symbolizes something regarding September 11th. But thank you, Ralph, for reminding everyone of that. I just want to make a quick announcement that on Wednesday, we're going to be dedicating our new mural. The town has been wonderfully responsive to the work. It's been very well received. We're excited about it. So we want to recognize the people that worked on it the most. We're going to be doing that. And I want to invite the entire town to come. We're going to have music from 6:00 to 6:30, and refreshments, and then from 6:30 to 7:00 we'll do the dedication. And then we're going to light it as soon as it gets dark enough. And for those of you who have seen it in daylight and like it, wait till you see it at night. It's going to be really nice. So thank you for all of your support, and hope to see you all there, and the members of the public, on Wednesday. And pray for good weather, because we already postponed it once, because it was 99 degrees, and we just can't keep postponing it. So hopefully, that 60 percent chance of showers is going to happen in the morning or in the middle of the night, and not right when we're doing it. Thank you.
All right, Ralph, we, I don't want to hold you up by the poll. Is my poll forward?
All right. Fred? Very good. So Fred, we have a proclamation here celebrating Penko Tech, which is celebrating their 50th anniversary this year. And behalf of the mayor's office, council, borough manager, and all the residents of Bristol Borough, I want to congratulate you. What you guys do for 50 years, providing people with technical service in HVAC, electricians, you know, medical assistance, everything you provide, I don't think people realize the service you provide to the community. And we drive by that building on the regular, heading out of town, but you have truly been an asset to the borough and the township for over 50 years, and we hope that you have 50 more ahead of you.
As do we. Thank you so much. Thank you. On behalf of the Hobiac family, our owners, our students and our staff, we appreciate you participating and celebrating our 50th year, and as you said, 50 more.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Congratulations. Okay, if anybody else on this side of the room would like to speak, if anybody on this side of the room would like to speak. That ends public participation. Hurry up. Any words, buddy?
I just want to mention a couple of things. One, the number of calls that we had for last month dropped, but we had a couple of really significant emergency responses. We had two serious fires on Buckley Street. They're being investigated by a private insurance investigator and the county fire marshal's office. Then we had the hazmat at the Dollar General, where the personnel were, they poured somewhere between 150 gallons of household cleaning fluids, including bleach, into a dumpster that leaked out onto the ground, and some of it did get into the storm sewer. We had personnel on scene from 8:00 at night until 8:00 in the morning. And actually, we had some people who were there from 8:00 at night until they had to leave to go to work, and they went right to work. Finally, the borough had to step in, get ahold of a environmental cleanup company. It's all been cleaned up. We're waiting for that stuff to be taken away. And then, I guess, the last thing I want to mention is, I did a presentation with Mary Jezwaldy at the school district, school board meeting, on the Fire Cadet Program. They're supporting the fire department to try and recruit people in the high school to get more members into the fire companies. The sign downstairs is part of that initiative, and it was well received by the school district.
That's great. Glad to have you back.
Yeah.
Any questions for the fire chief? The only thing I want to say to you, it's great to see Merle's back on the road.
Yes, it is.
I seen the blue lights coming down from Front Street. I said, "Thank God, Merle's back." Okay, chief?
Just real quick, we had a successful weekend with the Mill Street Run. It went into Italian Day, and then unfortunately, yesterday, because of the rain, the fish with the coffee, actual fishing out at the lagoon was canceled because of the heavy rain, but because we had the food ordered and all the equipment, we had the kids come to headquarters, and we interacted with them. We had breakfast with the kids. We gave them the fishing equipment, the T-shirts, the bait that we had already purchased, and that we're going to try to reschedule a day where we can all meet out at the lagoon and fish with the kids, so.
Any questions for the chief?
Yes, I just, several weeks ago, there was, I was getting some phone calls about solicitors going around. This was over in the Wood Street, New Brook Street area, and I talked to the chief about it, and he looked into it right away, and he knew at the time that they didn't have permits, because he signs all the permits, so if you could just, this was new for me, the whole process, if you could explain to the, to our residents what can happen, what they can do, or they don't have to even open their doors if they don't want to, but... No. So there is a process for solicitation. They have to apply, they come in with an application, and their check, background check, to us. I review all the applications, and then at some point, once I approve the applications, they will be issued a green card, which I will sign off with, on, with their information, their name, and the company that they work for, and what they're out there doing. They'll have all that. So when they come to your door, you should ask for that green card, for them to display that. And if they don't display that, then you should call us on a non-emergency number, which I believe is on the website, and an officer will arrive to the area and check them out. And if they're not legally supposed to be there, we'll escort them out of the borough.
Chief, why you mentioned about the non-emergency number?
Yes.
Could you just let people know that again? They're constantly asking, you know, and they're like, "I don't have time to go in here," so I think that's another thing, if you could just...
So the non-emergency number is 215-788-7811. That will put you through to a Bucks County dispatcher, not a 911 dispatcher, a non-emergency dispatcher, who will relay the call to us and then will respond.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And after you gave me that information, I put it out there and to the residents that had called me, and once I told, they put it out online, if they're registered. As soon as they ask the people that, they turn around and walk away, because they... Currently, there is nobody registered right now to be soliciting in town. I checked today before I came up to the meeting. So, thank you again for your help. You're welcome.
Thank you. My turn?
Yeah, yeah, I got some.
Okay. I have a few things. So first, I want to, to continue with the theme of celebration, I want to congratulate Bethel AME that's celebrating their 180th anniversary this year. And they will be open on Historic Bristol Day from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m. For anybody that wants to take a few minutes to go visit this landmark we have in town, I mean, 180 years, that's pretty remarkable that they've been around that long. The other thing I want to mention is, we recently, a few weeks ago, wrapped up our annual St. Anne Carnival that we've been running for about almost 25 years now, and I want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Ernie DeCaro and our police department for the night they sponsored for the borough children. There was approximately 500 borough kids that attended the carnival that night at no cost, thankfully to Bristol Environmental and the DeCaro family. So it was a pretty remarkable night, crazy to say the least, for those of us that worked it that night, but it was an awesome event, and just one more thing that our police department's doing to be involved with the kids in the community. I wanted to mention that we are in the final phases of launching the parking app, the Passport Parking App. We've run some test trials through the police department with the girls that work down there, and they are beyond thrilled with how easy it is to function, and we are just, at this point, waiting on signage and a couple other minor items, and the app will be launched, I believe, within the next couple weeks. So look for the stickers on the meters and the signs to let you know it's zoned in when you're utilizing the app. Also, this upcoming Saturday, we have our annual Oldies on the River, which is starting at 5:00 p.m. There are some great groups coming again this year, which is highlighted by Jackie Wilson's son, Bobby Wilson. And if none of you have seen Bobby Wilson, you would think you're listening to Jackie Wilson, and he is high-energy and puts on a phenomenal show. So again, our Oldies on the River this Saturday, starting at 5:00 p.m. By then, we also should have our two electronic police bikes, or I should say, our four electronic police bikes, that should be down there at the event there in the final phases of getting fitted out, so look for the awesome electronic police bikes, which are thanks to Tina Davis' office for getting us that grant money. The council president mentioned about seeing Merle with the blue lights. I've been approached, and I've also witnessed sometimes, that passenger, or people driving vehicles do not get out of the way out of courtesy for our volunteer firefighters when they're responding to a call. All you need to do is pull over. God forbid that's your loved one waiting for somebody to respond to this emergency or this fire call. You would want the person in front of that volunteer that's dropping everything they do to head to this fire, this emergency, to have like a clear path to the house. So please, if you see the blue lights, just pull over, let them pass, and then continue as necessary. I think that's the least we could do for these men and women that are responding to these calls. Two more things. One is, I want to proudly say that after weeks on end, I spoke to the district attorney's office, and our police chief has been cleared of any charges, and that the accusations had no basis, and the case against him is finally closed. I was in constant contact with the DA's office. We, he kept me informed along the way, and I can tell you that at no time was I worried about anything that's going on, because we have an incredible chief, and we have an incredible department. And at no point are we ever going to take any kind of accusations against any one of the men in blue, or women if they're here, lightly. It's unacceptable. You know, we don't run an unethical department. So when I am approached by people on the street saying that we covered up an incident on Beaver Street, you know, "How are you letting somebody go who has a DUI and had drug paraphernalia on there?" That's not what happened. That is total nonsense. That is total nonsense. We would never do that, and we would never accept it. We had four officers respond to that scene, four, and not one has even remotely thought that there was a situation where it was a DUI or somebody was under the influence. What they expected was, it was distracted driving. So we will never sit here and take accusations against this department lightly. We have a great police force. We have a ton of men who are dedicated to their job in this community, and whenever something is said that accuses this department or our chief, we are going to go at it with full force to prove a point. So I just want to let everyone know, if there's ever an issue, you can come to me, you can come to the chief. We're here to make sure we provide the best possible police protection to the people of this town. That's all I got.
Congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. I close public participation, but I'll give you an opportunity.
Oh, just to follow up with the solicitors. Are they actually solicitors, or are they more like scammers? Is that what you're telling our neighbors?
Just let me get through this. You know what? Go to the podium. Just, well, you can go. That's all. You want to know if...
Yeah, if they're actually just don't have permits, or is there like a possible scam going on with the...
He means the people walking around town.
Yeah, yeah.
Word, then.
The people that are walking around are trying to sell things. They could be scamming you or trying to get you to sign something.
Right.
If they don't have that green card, you should shut your door, call the non-emergency number, and let us come out and investigate it.
First of all, we even opened my door. It's even better. Phil, I have one question. Animal Control Officer, there's been some confusion on this guy, I know he's got a new phone number or something, but do you want people to call a non-emergency number, a 911 number, so it's on record? How do you want this to be handled?
So if there's a serious incident with a dog attack, or something like that, call 911. It gets documented. If it's not a serious incident, if it's an animal complaint of any nature, it doesn't have to be a dog, you could call the non-emergency number. That will also be documented, but it will be a non-emergency operator that will dispatch it over to us or to the animal control officer.
So you want to go through dispatch?
Yes, and there's two ways to do that. Like, you have the 911 system, and then you have the non-emergency system.
Which is 7811.
Yes.
So is there any way, Matt, I know you're listening, you can put that up on the screen? People can call that number for non-emergencies. Okay, Ryan, you have anything?
I have a question about the box that's running around town. Like, I know after a certain time, like, my neighbors and myself, I'll be taking my dog outside, so is there anything that we would be able to do about that?
Not really. I mean, they're free-barking animals.
And I haven't scared of them in a while.
They're all over. It's not just in Bristol Borough. It's everywhere. Here.
Anything else? I just want to, before we go on to somebody else, thank you for all your doing for the program. I know how much time and hours and putting into it, and I heard nothing but positive feedback about the football program, the flag football, the best, so you're an asset to what's going on in our neighborhood, and so thank you. All right?
Um, yeah, I don't have anything. I actually, I've already talked to Mr. Gorman, and they just weren't able to sign. I'm begging.
Okay, yes, the Mill Street Run had their 55th annual race, and I want to thank John Monday, and Tim Scanlon, and Steve Konovich, and all the volunteers in the Bristol, our staff here, public workers. I did notice something. There was a traffic issue where the traffic police was stopping people when the runners were coming, rightfully so, because they could get down that far, and the runners are coming, and one fellow decides he's going to go through, make a right-hand turn, even in spite of the runners being there. And the attendant even knocked on the window and asked him to stop, and the guy just went, kept going right on through. I mean, total disregard. I don't know if they ever found him, somebody with a Virginia tag, but I keep thinking, maybe when they do that Mill Street Run, they should close off at Jefferson Avenue instead of Lafayette Street. This way, those that are out of town know that, you know, send them down to Pond Street to get by, and, but I just, it's total disregard for any authority, the way some of these people drive anymore. Just like you say, they don't, they don't have any respect for the fire companies, or first aid, you know, the rescue squads. There's something wrong with some of these people. And 40th Italian Day, I want to thank the Bristol Lions Club, and the police, and the rescue squad for all they did Saturday, and it was beautiful. I got a lot of comments about the tall ships at Cowman Nickel. It was impressive. I want to mention Grundy, Grundy Foundation is having a gala on Saturday, September 23rd, from 6:00 to 9:00. If someone's interested in tickets, they can get in touch with the Grundy Foundation. And now there's some issues. Amtrak is closing down Bass Street again, or detouring Bass. While the street was halfway closed down for all the waterworks, they stopped the job and left, and now they want to, they want to set detour signs up again. And my family's business is on Bass Street, so I'm not going to kid anybody, it affects us, but it really affects the whole town, because they put these detours up on 13, and people just go right on by. They don't even tell them that the road's open for local traffic or anything like that, or open at nights. So that's an issue, and I think Amtrak has to, has to do something a little different on the way they're working, and they only work from 9:00 to 3:00, which to me, they should be working 24 hours to get this stuff done, if it's that critical to get this bridge fixed, as we saw in '95. They can do it if they have to. And the last issue I have is PennDOT with their ADA ramps on Lafayette Street, Lafayette and Rafter Street. There was a 100-year-old healthy sycamore tree taken down in front of the home without the homeowner's permission, or even without him knowing about it. I understand the borough was there the day before and left him a note, but he said that he wakes up in the morning and the people are out there cutting his tree down. And I've been arguing about trees for a long time. We need these trees, if we want to look like it's a stately street, you have to have stately trees out there. You can't cut all this stuff down and then have a barren, a barren road. I talked to the homeowner, and I talked to several neighbors, who were all saying they hope they don't cut my tree down, and so I said, well, I got in touch, and I think, I think it's on hold right now on who's cutting trees down and who's giving permission to, but this homeowner should be compensated. You know, he buys the tree with, with his healthy, you know, with his beautiful landscape, and now all of a sudden, he's got a barren property, and, and I kind of think it made it, it might have been easier for the guy who's been on the ADA projects to cut that down, have it cut down, but being easy for him is not best for the town. And I don't think they would let this happen out in, out in St. David, where the PennDOT's office is out in the main line, but, you know, it's okay to do it in Bristol. So I would be very careful on how we proceed with any of this, and the street tree removal, even the tree planting. We don't have a program, and we need to have a program in place on how we're going to handle this stuff. If not, we're going to, we're going to really lose a lot of, a lot of trees and a lot of good, you know, good landscaping in our town. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to remind people again that the dedication for the, people call it the mural, I think it's a masterpiece painting. It looks like you could walk into it. Trumploy, which means it's the trick of the eye. They did a phenomenal job. Like, to be there for the dedication, because like council and raising the bar and all that's been done to enhance what was already there on Mill Street and on Market, it's a continuation. It seems to be the outlet that people use to get out of town. So now with the businesses and the homes, and the, some of the organizations there, like the masons and stuff, all the cleanup and attention to detail that they're doing, and now this is really important, you know, with the flowers that go out at Market and Pond. I just think it's important, if you could be there to show your support, because there's just continuously going to be bigger and better things. And all the people that went into that, I think, need the help with that to be recognized, because it really is a masterpiece. It's exquisite. With that in mind, Bristol, people are here all the time. We're always having an event, something going on. As a resident, as a business owner, just keep in mind that, let's keep it beautiful. If there is something, you're able to address it, pick it up on the weekend when Public Works isn't doing their fantastic job that they do, maybe you could kick it, you know, and help a little. If not, you're welcome to call myself or Betty. Let us know. It's our ward. It's all throughout town, and we'll address it and get those, you know, our containers, our trash receptacles, before were there, and now they're constantly full, and that's a good thing, because people are coming, and they're, they're buying things on Mill Street, refreshments and things. So just keep that in mind, because that's really important. I know that Mr. Dillon worked with the trash pickup and recycling and changed those days so that the weekends were prepared. You know, we're, we're looking good, we're polished, and we have to continue that as a resident, be, continue to be proud of your community, which everyone is. It's a great place to be, and let's just pitch in if you can. I think that's it.
Thank you. That's going to be quick.
Yes. Quick question. Would it be possible for us to have a shredding event?
We usually do one every year in the spring. I'm sure we'll do it again this spring. We did one last, it was in April.
We did one just for the borough, because we had so much over the years. We just had to do one internally, because it was going out the doors.
Right. That's usually in this place.
Yeah, I would like to find, you know, part of cleaning up.
Yeah, one, just one last thing, too. With Mr. Katoche said about, Councilman Katoche said about the trees, I think that it's important. I know we've addressed it, even like on Mill Street, some of the businesses, after that ice storm or whatever, just went ahead and cut them down and didn't replace them. And on Radcliffe Street and throughout town, so maybe we could have a task force that's for trees or, you know, greener, just that, you know, because I know you have a lot to do, the office has a lot to do, so maybe we could form a committee that can be...
We do have, we do have a program. And it tells you which trees you plant, the caliber of tree.
Exactly.
So, I mean, I don't, I think our inspectors may, Louis' talking about two different things. One, the tree was cut down.
Right.
The other issue is, and we mentioned this before, people putting... The other issue is, and we mentioned this before, people putting bushes where it should be a tree.
Agreed.
And, you know, we need to address all this. I think that we need a meeting with our inspection department, that's what I think.
Or a tree whisperer, that can be in charge of saying, "That's not a tree."
Right, exactly.
I actually spoke, I spoke to Don and Donna McCluskey, and they are part of the tree tender group in town. And they've gone to class, classes for it. And there's a program where you can, they'll even help put the trees in. You can buy the tree through, I forget whether it's Philadelphia Horticultural or Morris Arboretum, but you can buy it at a very discounted rate, and the tree tenders will help put it in and then help to raise it.
Right, they did that in the parking lot.
And they did it, they did it over by the cemetery on Wood Street.
Right.
They put up a half a dozen trees there, and a few years back, they did Old 13. And they said they'd be more than happy to work along with anybody who, you know, somebody needs a tree.
That's right now from people that want to be on the committee.
Right, so I just thought maybe we have a committee, yeah.
I'll have a committee with the inspection department and we'll...
Right, just to give them a break, because they have a lot going on, so at least if there's someone. Thank you.
There's a couple items on here that Amanda, you, who wants to discuss the Mill Street and Rutherford Street improvement and the traffic pattern on Fergate Avenue.
Sure. Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about Mill and Radcliffe, and I think Jacob's going to speak about Pond and Monroe. So there's bid results in your packets this evening for improvements at Mill and Radcliffe Streets. So this would be essentially pedestrian improvements. We'd be bumping out each corner of the intersection. There's gore striping actually out there now, the diagonal white striping. The bump outs will follow pretty much that alignment already. So the travel lane will not be narrowed itself, but does provide some visual traffic calming at that intersection. With that, we'll be installing decorative crosswalks and, of course, putting the brick sidewalks back in place as well. So there are bid results in your packets tonight, and RNS is the low bidder for your consideration this evening. That project will be fully funded by VCD grant funding.
There's no cost attached.
No cost to the borough.
So where she was talking about, Mayor, I understand, and here, on the King George side and on the Cantina side, that wide intersection will now get smaller, because it'll come off the curb on each side where pedestrians actually can stand there and make the cross shorter. It's too long of a distance. That's what is on our agenda tonight to approve or not approve.
And actually, on the back of that post report, if you wanted to flip it over, if anybody wanted to see, we do have a plan at that intersection. Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so you'll see those dark gray crossing areas are actually narrower than they currently are, so that your crossing time for a pedestrian is less, and you'll be more visible within the intersection. If anybody has any specific questions, I could point to it, but otherwise, yeah.
Amanda, when this, actually before Pendott, when Pendott was looking at this, the Rotary Club of Bristol had a, intended to put a clock up. And at the time, we were talking to Pendott, and we thought if they bumped it out by the King George would be an ideal spot for that, because you would see it coming down Mill Street. You would see it coming up from the wharf. It'd be a two-sided clock, you know, one that you see throughout different towns. And that was several years ago, but the Rotary still has the money allocated for that. And at the time, council had agreed to it back then, but I don't know what needs to be done, if council needs to approve that again, or...
Then we got to revisit and also, you know, get my pictures of it.
Pictures up, okay.
You know, out and see where it's going to go. My thing is, and I said from when I started here, who's going to maintain this stuff? Because every time we do something, that's what I said in raising the bar with all these murals, who's going to maintain it? They said they are. So we only have so much resources with setting dots.
I mean, this is pretty, this is pretty, you know, it doesn't require a lot of maintenance, but if the Rotary Club will, we will take care of it.
I think we need to look at how it would fit in that corner and look at everything.
Yeah, we do have some drawings. They are a pretty spec item now, for the most part, so we can actually lay that out on that corner and see what it would look like.
I really think, and I've been saying also, Mayor, that we need some kind of light in that crossroad, because when you come around, even if you're at the stop sign and you go to turn, you see visually somebody crossing on the King George side. You really lose them on the Cantina side. So that can be, that intersection can be lit up. I think it's going to help.
And then perhaps while we're doing it, that since they're, whatever they're bringing to that center or whatever, that we include electric, so that for the future with decor and all that we do, that we'll have it there.
Right.
You know, since we're, just a thought.
Yeah, okay.
You know, since they're doing it now to get that there.
Yeah, we can certainly take a look at those things. If, you know, the contract is awarded this evening, I think they are looking to get started pretty quickly in hopes that we do have project completed by the time the tree lighting occurs. So this is a pretty fast-moving project. But we're also going to need to work around some of the festivals and events down at the waterfront and the borough for the fall.
Great, thank you.
I'm Jacob Riggs with Gilmore also. I usually stick behind the scenes, but I'm out here tonight. So my presentation is for the Pond and Monroe and Fergate Ave intersection improvements, which is currently set up as a five-way intersection. And these improvements would to be to provide striping and delineators, I believe you all have plans, yes, to eliminate the weird triangular intersection with Pond and the one-way Fergate Avenue. So the proposal would be to eliminate that stop sign on Pond Street in that triangular island area and move it down towards where the intersection with Monroe Street is, and then provide a new stop sign for Fergate Avenue with a one-way section and make it parallel with 90 degrees into Pond Street. There was, we got two quotes. One was from Guide Mark, they'd only solely do the line striping for the project. And then RNS would be to install the signs and do the delineators work, and then the borough would purchase all the materials, as it was discussed. There was an option for RNS with the Quick Curb, which is, it's a nice plastic that would hold the delineators and would more delineate the roadway, and you'd have a bump before you hit the delineators, or the single surface knotted delineators, which would just be a single post every so many feet. So if there's any questions, answer them.
The only thing, I was out there the first, and the second people, and the traffic pattern that was put up till it frozen, whatever, some people happy, some people worried. I think we really need to figure out and make sure we're doing the right thing. I know that in the section from the stop sign out until you get to Monroe is dangerous, because people can't make that turn.
Wide open.
People can't even cross the street if you're handicapping, you're trying to go from the one side of Fargate to the other side, it's just too long of a distance. So this would shorten some stuff up. I still don't know if it's, the pattern is the right pattern or not. I would really like to maybe go out again, and, I mean, I don't have a problem with voting for something tonight, approving it, with the understanding that we still need to maybe fine-tune it a little bit, if that's possible. Though I don't know, because it has to be exactly to what's here, or can we go out on site with our engineers and contractors and say, you know what, like Kevin Everett was saying, was our public works director, when we had the temporary...
Setup, yeah.
Setup, it was more right. He said if we moved it more left, it would make the cars where Finney McGee's are and the people that live there, would make that easier for them to turn around.
But you're staying behind the delineators.
Behind, right, on the Finney McGee side.
So we did revise it after that, we discussed with Kevin, and we, they wanted to, yeah, you wanted to block off that whole entrance from Fargate into the behind the area, but it wouldn't provide enough turnaround area if you came in only off Monroe for those residents and the business there in the corner. So we did provide another entrance off that side, but we shifted it up so you can't do a straight-through drive.
And you got trucks being delivered, you know, you got beer trucks, you have trucks...
Which, we did run truck turning templates, and they all work with this configuration. They can still make it out from Fargate onto Pond, and then from Pond, they can turn and go down Monroe, it would still...
So we're going to put up the yellow, is exactly what they did on Route 13, correct? Plastic on the ground.
Yes, that would be your second option, B, it would be the more pricey one, but...
What's involved with the road? Because we just paved, I don't want to start with holes in the road that we just paved.
Yeah, so that would require anchoring, bolting into the new asphalt, and it would just be line striping. It's probably very minimal disturbance to the asphalt itself, but it could be replaced, taken out, if it's decided not, it's not working.
Well, that's the thing, I don't want to, how's everybody feel about all this?
Well, Fargate would become one-way out, right? Fargate's where Finney McGee's.
Yeah, that would stay.
You can only go out.
Yep.
It's making you turn, so you, it's almost like you have to make a right-hand turn to get back on the...
On to Pond.
On Pond Street.
It does give you the option to turn left out of there as well. They would have to stop to ongoing traffic from...
And does this affect, don't a couple of the people have driveways there?
Yeah, so that's why we provided an entrance from Fargate Ave in, and there's also an entrance at Monroe, where you can still get behind those delineators. It would allow people, the residents that, I think only maybe two houses park on the street, and there's one right at where the gore striping, the white line striping would start, they have a driveway, that's, we left enough opening for them to get into the driveway still.
Would it minimize the parking, we wouldn't have any off-street parking, not off-street, on-street parking there?
You would still, you would still have...
Still have it there.
Yep.
I couldn't tell whether that was a car or not there.
Yeah, you would be able to park behind those delineators, it'd be a wide-open area for vehicles still. And you would still have the parking along the other side of Pond Street as well.
And is Phil, we're doing away with all the stop signs there. Is Fillmore Street still going to be two-way at that one section, or is that just going to be one-way?
No, it could still be two-way. We haven't changed anything with Fillmore.
Okay.
But Fair, that stretch of Fargate Ave would only be one-way.
Yeah.
So is there a way to... Maybe we should just table it and deal with it in October, coming back in a couple weeks. Say whatever, we'll table it, we pay for it, and then going out there again to make sure we all know what we're doing.
Hey, I don't have a problem with that.
No, I think it's fine, plus the other...
Yeah, I'd like to give a rating, Greg, it's kind of worth an opportunity to handle this stuff.
Yes, I think that's good. It's only going to be a couple of weeks.
Two weeks. Or is there a way to award it in terms of is happy and continue?
Well, you're not really awarding anything. Because we're moving a stop sign, you're going to have to authorize the advertisement before you adopt the ordinance. But it doesn't sound like you're ready to do that. So I think you need to finalize this before you formally approve it. So I think tableing is fine. It's, we've been working on this for 10 years, so I guess a couple of weeks is the time.
Yeah, I just don't want to do something, we just paid all this money in paper, and I don't want to do something that we say is not right. I think what was out there was, you know, I guess, I was involved with the carnival all week. And people were just coming in a pile, some people thought it was a sobriety check link. They thought they're not doing some kind of driver's test or...
Yeah.
They were confused, but I don't know, I heard a lot of positive things also, because they can make the right onto Monroe, and people were stopping more to let people out of Monroe, coming from another place. I think we should...
Address it in public, I mean, work session and be able to...
And maybe schedule another day out there next week.
Sure.
Kurt, what do you think?
That's fine, yeah. David?
Amanda?
No problem.
When we go out there also, can we actually look at where the parking is on Pond Street and actually lay it out for parking places? Unlined parking places, like what's a parking spot, 19 feet or 20 feet?
Where's this at, Louis?
Yeah, which side?
Along Pond Street.
On which side?
On right where the houses are, on where Lois Barrow is and all.
They don't want that, because then people are on the park in their spots. You put parking there, then anybody's going to go there and park.
We're talking about removing the no-parking signs on this building.
No, that's, right now, they park where they want to park.
Yeah, the plan does have the remove no parking.
Just remove no parking.
That was, it should have been removed during this time.
Okay, but even though I still think we should look at, you know, sometimes you get somebody that, yeah, parks right in the middle of where you could have got two cars, and they put, you know, they put their car there, and that's, and they're happy. I mean, I'm not talking about the Pond Street residents.
Right.
I think we have this all over town, and when you want to increase parking, the best way, you know, one of the easiest ways is to tell people where they can park, you know, where they have to park. And it will make things, you know, fall into place a little better.
All right, so I'm seeing...
I'd like to go out when you go back out.
Yeah, I'm seeing, just can we table it, and we have a time that Jim could send out to everybody saying, there's a meeting scheduled this day and this time, whoever wants to make it from council could be there.
Great.
Right? We'll try to do it, where we'll put a couple of times out that people can respond to, the second be there, and the chief and the mayor could be there.
I think a lot of people didn't even realize what the, what was going on, because we just got done painting, and then all of a sudden, the yellow...
Yeah, I do know that Kevin Everett, Public Works, purchased signs that said, "This is a new traffic pattern," but they were not here at the time when they did the test layout, so.
All right, Jacob, thank you.
Thank you.
First time this spot I'm taking. Okay. Do you have anything else? Billy, have any?
No.
I just have a couple of things. One, again, as the mayor said, to do office this Saturday, it's a great time for everybody to come out and enjoy themselves. It's great to go out. We're also in need of a Christmas tree. Again, this year, we're trying to find a tree. Anybody knows anybody, we go cut the tree down, we clean up, take the stump out and also, if somebody wants to get rid of the tree, it saves them a lot of money, as long as the tree's good on, you know, all the way around. And it's nice, it's a nice, nice tree.
Will this interfere with the work that we are...
No.
...with the contractor?
It's going to be done before a tree laid.
Okay.
That's why they wanted to award that tonight.
Good.
So get the word out, how you can put it on TV or wherever, if anybody has a tree. Yeah, the last thing is that, I should have mentioned this in the beginning, we're in executive session, discuss personnel in a union grievance, and council has decided, including everybody, decided that council does not... executive session to discuss personnel in a union grievance, and council has decided, including everybody, decided that council does not want to settle this grievance, and they wanna continue whatever has to happen, but we are not in a position to settle this agreement. We will always settle this agreement, this grievance, so we authorized our attorney that's handling this grievance to fight this and do whatever he has to do, but we're not settling it. Anybody have anything else? Ryan?
For the Bucks County Bulldogs football program in town, Vanessa just asked me that she would have came if she had a chance by her husband and her birthday. She said she wants to give a thank you to council and the police department and the borough residents for supporting the football program, especially to the chief for being there, and she helped him with everything. She said the first game was Friday night, and it was a huge success because of all of council and the police force coming. She just said, "Thank you."
Thank you, and thank her for, her and her husband for all they're doing. Okay, so we've done our work session. Then we move on to our regular agenda. Again, anybody on this side, anyone wanna speak on anything? Anybody on this side, everyone wanna speak on anything? Addings, public participation, so our number two on the agenda.
Council president, I would like to make a motion to accept council meeting minutes for August 14, 2023, accept treasurer's report for July 2023, accept fire chief's report August 2023, accept inspection department report for August 2023, accept public works report for August 2023, accept police report for August 2023, except hard report for August 2023.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Kuroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number three.
And Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the filing of applications for funding with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for projects for police, fire, public works, and rescue squad.
Second by Maria. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution designating an agent of the borough to execute documents for the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for grant money for the Green Lane Study.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the adoption of resolution for 2024 minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform defined contribution pension fund, $12,273.18.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Gorman. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the adoption of resolution for 2024 minimum municipal obligation for the uniform pension plan, $550,463.60.
Second by, let's figure out, questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize adoption of resolution for 2024 minimum municipal obligation for the non-uniform pension plan, $564,473.65.
I have a second. I think I might just figure out questions or comments. Just so you know, this is mandated by the state. These are things that we have no control over. But if you look at the two pension funds, the police pension fund and the non-uniform fund, we just spent over a million dollars just for these two pension funds, and the pension funds are underfunded on top of everything else, so it's getting more difficult. I mean, when I first started here, I think these obligations may have been 60,000, 70,000, now they're 500 and some thousand. So budget time, we're gonna have to really put our hands together. All those in favor? Aye. Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize awarding bid for construction improvements at Mill and Radcliffe Streets per recommendation of borough engineer. Lowest qualified bidder is RNS Construction in the amount of $294,977.60.
Second by Mr. Kuroci. Questions or comments? These were all done. So just so you know, these bids went through a service that was done, and nobody had to bring them in to new way of doing it. All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number nine.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize hiring of two part-time police officers, Jack O'Donnell and Dominic Chavonce Nowski, to replace the two part-time officers that resigned.
I have a second. Second, I must figure out questions or comments. All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Number 10. Somebody make a motion to table?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table the proposed traffic pattern revision for Farragut, Pond, and Monroe Streets.
Second by Maria. All in favor? Pose.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize requests for extension of the time limitations for the 802 Bass Street land development to January 11, 2024, per letter dated September 7, 2023 from Vincent Piravanti, Piravanti, Inc., civil engineers and land surveyors.
Second by, let's figure out, questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Pose. Bill, would you like to return?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.